Evening, everyone. The August 2022 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting will now be called. Order please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, Madam Mayor.
Good evening. The deceased residents for the month of July 2022. George Keegan. Emily Ekman. Shawn Roberts. Gladys Crepak. John Dorsh Jr. Hazel Rolls. Joan Impagliazzo. Bonnie Gasparretti. Agnes Kennedy. Norina Fittingoff. And Joseph Dewire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wilbert, would you give us the roll call?
Mr. Heller.
Present.
Mrs. Fuchs.
Yeah.
Mrs. Heller.
Here.
Mayor Leslie.
Here.
Mr. Vasquez.
Here.
Ms. Suicki.
Here.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Gilroy.
Here.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Wilbert.
Mrs. Bowill.
Here.
Chief Montella.
Here.
Chief Vice.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you, sir. That opens the first public discussion session. If there's anyone that would like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium and state your name and street for the record.
Harry Seth, 3633 North.
Good evening, Harry.
I, you know, two months ago, we lost an icon in this borough, Harold Hampton. We really did. I mean, here's a guy that worked here for years for gratis. He did a lot of zoning work for us and did it right. And it would be nice that we could honor him somehow. You know, name a street for him or maybe name the walking trail for him or something.
We plan on it.
He was a great guy, and it's an honor if we should honor him.
We plan on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for public discussion? If so, please approach the podium and state your name and street for the record.
Shawn McKenna, Madison Drive, 4956. Council President Heller, council members, Chief Vice, Chief Montella, friends and neighbors. My name is Shawn McKenna, and I am here this evening to speak about the event that was held at Coburn School on Sunday, July 17. That event was the Second Show for Hope, a car show and fundraiser benefiting the Hope for Haley organization. The show exceeded all expectations I had for a second-year car show. We had approximately 300 cars participate in the show and hundreds upon hundreds of people in attendance, many of them residents, you know, from the area. Our emcee from the first Show for Hope, Kevin Haney, an educator at Strathhaven High School, returned this year to emcee the second show. He spoke from the soul and he spoke to the soul, providing inspiration to all who heard his words. He gave insight into the little girl in whose memory this show was held, his student for whom he cared for so much. We also had Elaine Fakara, the reigning Miss Independence, return to sing our national anthem. Her voice was so powerful that I thought at one point that she would blow the speakers out on the PA system. As she sang, we saluted our nation's flag high above the show field, proudly flying from the top of the ladder on one of Brookhaven's own tower trucks. And thank you, Chief Montella, for that. We had close to 30 vendors, including many representatives from other local nonprofit organizations, most of whom focus on mental health and helping people who are in need. Many Brookhaven businesses participated in the show either as a vendor or as a sponsor or both. People came from as far away as New York City, Redding, Easton, Carlisle, Upper Bucks County, Montgomery County, Northern Jersey, Maryland, and beyond. It was truly a sight to behold. In the end, after expenses, we raised $10,593.63 for the Hope for Haley organization. For a car show in its second year, this is truly a spectacular number. Brookhaven played a profound part in making this show possible, and there are no words of thanks strong enough to truly convey the gratitude in my heart and in the hearts of those who strive to further the cause of hope in Haley Jackson's memory. Another program in the borough I have been active in is the Hometown Hero Project. Years ago, I co-founded, co-whatever-we-did, co-founded the program with Terry Heller. We worked hours upon hours together to recognize the heroism and sacrifice made by our veterans, sacrifices that earns them the title Hometown Hero. Today, I want to mention some other heroes that you do not see on our banners. A hero is the voice on the other end of the phone when someone is in crisis, the voice of a stranger that literally and figuratively talks someone off the ledge who is at the point of giving up. They save countless lives by giving hope where there is hopelessness. A hero is a local official, an official that you reach out to for help. Help with securing a location for a fundraiser event. They do not only help you with the location, they help you with the logistical things as well. They roll out the red carpet to the organization which you are supporting. They become a supporter themselves, a devout and true supporter. A hero. A hero is a school teacher who never abandons a student, even years after they have left the school. The teacher sees a former student trapped in a war zone and reaches out to everyone they know to get that former student and his family to safety. The teacher who sees another former student in a country torn by war due to an illegal invasion and organizes a drive to get that student the supplies they need to keep them and their neighbors safe. The teacher who loses a student and devotes himself to helping to build that student's legacy and ensuring that they are never forgotten, ever. A hero is a little girl. A little girl who witnesses a new kid in school being bullied and puts herself in between the bullies and the new kid, then takes this kid under her wing and becomes best of friends. The little girl who sees a friend having a difficult time and goes out of her way to bring that friend a yellow rose to brighten their day. The little girl who strives to bring smiles to the faces of others, even though she may not be smiling on the inside. The little girl who brings, whose spirit brings hope to so many. Lastly, a hero is a mother and father who suffer a loss that few people can possibly imagine. The mom and dad who suffer a pain so profound that they create an organization to prevent other moms and dads from suffering as they do. A mom and dad who strive to change the world, one child at a time. The mom and dad who offer comfort to children and parents while in need of comfort themselves. These, my friends, these are heroes. In closing, I want to repeat one of the statements made by Mr. Haney during his speech at the show. It's four words. This cannot end here. Five words, sorry. It cannot and it must not. Every child lost is a scar on the soul of our towns, our communities, our nation, and our world. I'm going to share something personal to me. My personal hope for Haley. It is my hope that one day our children's children will read about what we are doing here and now, and they will say, "These people were the pioneers. They laid the groundwork that started the conversation about mental health, the conversation that ended the stigma surrounding seeking help. These were the people that helped bring the end to the epidemic of teen and adolescent suicide." That is my true hope, my hope for Haley Jackson. I again offer my gratitude to the borough of Brookhaven, the Borough Council, our staff, our chiefs, and our residents. I am beyond proud to be a part of this community, a community that supports the mission and the cause of hope.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for public discussion? First public discussion session is closed. Chief Vice, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
For the month of July, the Brookhaven Borough Police Department initiated or were assigned a total of 815 cat assignments through Delcom. And some of the noteworthy ones, we had one robbery, one aggravated assault, 13 thefts, three simple assault, two vandalism, criminal mischief, three fraud, six DUIs, three public drunkenness, one disorderly conduct, four narcotics investigations, 12 animal complaints, two solicitor complaints, one curfew violation, 38 suspicious conditions, two harassment, 31 disturbances or domestic disputes, six civil complaints, 55 medical assists, two mental health responses, 52 assist other departments, 17 alarms, 19 vehicle crashes, and 25 hazardous condition assist motorists calls. For the month, we had a lot of arrests. We had 42 adult arrests this month. We had three juvenile arrests. There were 88 citations issued, 20 parking violations were issued, and 142 warnings were issued. Just administratively, a couple things. We continue to remain ahead of schedule with our accreditation process. We only have about five policies left to go, so we're moving pretty rapidly with that. As I stated last month, each month, we're going to be recognizing a deserving officer for their outstanding work. This officer is chosen by their peers; it is not chosen by me. And this month, we recognize Officer Michael Palmer. His fellow officers gave reasons such as, "He dedicates much of his time to our department. He takes initiative while off duty to help others. Even when he's off duty, he's on duty." Officer Palmer has made numerous arrests this last month in addition to taking time to go out and engage with our community, and he always has a smile on his face. He is proving to be an asset to our department and to our borough. I just want to share a letter that I received on behalf of Officer Palmer. The letter states, "Chief Vice, on July 13, 2022, Officer Michael Palmer responded to a motorist who had pulled over to the side of the road in Glen Mills, PA, and who was in obvious and apparent distress. Officer Palmer was off duty and in a restaurant down the street. He quickly rendered assistance to ensure that the occupant of this vehicle was stable and safe. Officer Palmer's actions speak volumes to his character as a civil servant and to his dedication on and off duty to the law enforcement mission. His selfless and caring response from a restaurant reinforces the fact that there is no finer group of professionals dedicated to the safety and well-being of our communities than those who have made the choice of service as police officers. His actions were inspiring and evocative of great confidence and training and abilities he brought to bear. What made Officer Palmer's response all the more meaningful was the motorist who was in distress happened to be my daughter. Please extend my sincere thanks and deepest appreciation to Officer Palmer for his professionalism, care, and his clear dedication to the finest of missions, and thank you for your leadership of Brookhaven's Police Department, which has clearly established a culture of service and of mission success." And that was written by a U.S. Marshal whose daughter was the one who was in distress that day.
Great work, Officer Palmer.
Very. He's to be commended for that. And that just echoes his.
Very much.
All of our officers are incredible, but for him to get up out of a restaurant, go out and help somebody that was in distress speaks volumes. So for those reasons, he is deserving from his peers as the Officer of the Month for the month of July. So I'm also happy to report for the month of July, we did not have one reportable accident. And a reportable accident is an accident where there's injury or severe damage where a vehicle needs to be towed. It's the first time since I've been here that we went a month without one reportable accident. So I would like to believe that this is a direct result of the enforcement actions of our officers that are out there reducing, to try to reduce the serious accidents and keep all of our citizens safe. So I applaud them for that. Just a couple of quick things. After months of waiting, our LiveScan system has been delivered. The cabinet we were waiting for was a victim of the supply chain issues. It has arrived. That will be up and running as of Wednesday. So we will be self-sufficient as of then, so we're looking forward to that. Training for the month, Officer Wetton attended training, range training and SWAT training. Officer Eastman attended a school called A-Ride, an Advanced Roadside Impairment Driving Enforcement class. Officers Wetton and Kelso attended drone flight training. And we have Officer Rishclun, who's here receiving his training through the FTO program. We're very happy with his success so far. And as far as community, I just want to thank one of our residents, Rita Rule, for providing lunch for our officers this month. She's a huge supporter of our police department, our fire department, and we just really appreciate her kindness and generosity. I also want to say congratulations to Shawn McKenna and those involved in the Show for Hope Car Show this month. It was an incredible, incredible display, and everyone knows that the Hope for Haley is near and dear to us. So I say, "Great job to Shawn and everybody who was involved."
And thank you for your work for the, towards the foundation and showing up to the event and as well as the officers that are with us. It means a lot.
Yes, it does. We're happy to be there. And that's all I have for this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Montella.
Good evening, Council and residents. Brookhaven Fire Company's July 2022 Fire Report, three fire incidents in the borough, 22 non-fire, 23 calls for mutual aid, three drills for a total of 50 for the month. We have 375 fire rescue calls so far this year. We had $500 loss on structure, $2,000 loss on contents, for a total of 2,500. We had $105,000 of property endangered for the month and $1,650,000 of property endangered for the year. No firefighter injuries, no civilian injuries. Manpower, 50 calls, average 13 firefighters in service for 207 personnel hours, 4,226 for the year. Three training sessions, average 27 firefighters, 216 hours of training allowed for the month, 1,760 for the year. Following significant incidents in Brookhaven Borough, we had two building fires, 5,200 Hilltop Drive, Unit B3, we had a fire in an HVAC unit that was actually contained to the unit, smoke in the apartment or the condo. 7222 Hilltop Drive, we had a fire on the third floor outside deck, contained to the deckboards and a flower pot. And we had two accidents in the borough, Bridgewater and Creek and Swiftwater Lane. We have one gas leak inside at 516 Ward Road. Assisted Upland Fire Company on two building fires, 1018 Mulberry Street and 19 Main Street. Assisted South Media Fire Company on a building fire on 49 Green Valley Lane. Assisted Glen Olden Fire Company on a second alarm building fire on 408 Cusford Avenue. Our monthly training was vehicle rescue, training involving extrication from vehicles of trapped people. We had water rescue training and tactics. And the fire company submitted a grant to Energy Transfer Partners for 12 sets of full turnout gear firefighters at a value of $50,000, so we hope we get that grant. And our members attended the Hope for Haley event at Coburn Elementary School. Thanks, Shawn. Fantastic job as usual.
Thank you.
Great job, and thanks for the borough for all they did. It was good, I mean, it was a great show by the borough in general, everybody, team effort. Thank you, Shawn. And Brookhaven Fire Company provided EMS coverage for the Brookhaven Swim Club the past weekend while they have their swimming championship meets. And our ambulance report for the month of July, 240 ambulance calls, 167 transports, 150 ALS dispatch calls, 90 BLS dispatch calls, and 1,576 ambulance calls so far this year. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Leslie.
Good evening. I just have two things. Congratulations to Officer Palmer for being the Officer of the Month for month of July, and congratulations to the Brookhaven Swim Club's swimmer, Sebastian Graham, for qualifying for the elite meet. So good luck to Sebastian. That's all I have.
Mr. Wills.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the solicitor's report is on file with the Borough Secretary's Office in the event any members of the public would like to review that. I have a couple action items for Borough Council's consideration this evening. One concerns the new Stormwater Management Ordinance. As the borough is aware, both federal and state regulations require the borough to implement a program of stormwater controls. Those regulations have changed on both a federal and state level, and therefore we are required to implement and adopt a new Stormwater Management Ordinance. And the Pennsylvania DEP is strongly suggesting that we adopt that ordinance on or before September 30 of 2022. A template of that ordinance was provided to the borough by the Delaware County Planning Department. It is a rather voluminous ordinance, to say the least, approximately 77 pages in length. It makes for great beach reading or poolside reading if you have an opportunity to certainly review this line by line. Nonetheless, both myself, Councilwoman Fuchs, and the engineer, Catania, met approximately a week or 10 days ago to make certain amendments to this ordinance so that we would localize that here for Brookhaven Borough. I believe we have accomplished that particular task, and therefore I would ask Borough Council this evening to consider adopting a motion to advertise this ordinance for Council's consideration and final adoption at the September 13 council meeting, which again would get us within the September 30 deadline. So if there is the pleasure of council, a motion would be in order to simply advertise this ordinance.
What is the pleasure of council?
So moved. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Motion carries.
Second action item for Borough Council's consideration concerns a police services agreement with the Borough of Parkside. This council is aware, under Section 1202 of the Borough Code, specifically subsection 24, it authorizes boroughs and empowers boroughs to enter into contracts with near and adjacent municipalities for aid and assistance and police protection and to make appropriations. Therefore, we have been in communications with the Parkside Borough Council concerning a potential agreement that would simply be tentative or temporary in nature, simply between July until the end of the year. So as far as the length of this agreement, it would be approximately five to six months in length. I know we've had an opportunity to speak about this. The particulars, I know Borough Council has had an opportunity to review this agreement. This agreement has been signed off and executed by Parkside Borough officials, and therefore if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to adopt this police services agreement with the Borough of Parkside.
I'll make the motion.
What is the pleasure?
I'll make the motion.
Second, anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any questions? And Mr. Wills, let me interject. The issue at hand is that the Borough of Parkside was having some issues hiring part-time officers, much as this borough was having. It's more of a statewide, country, nationwide, really? Could you say a nationwide issue? Parkside does not have a full, full-time department. They rely heavily on part-time police coverage, so they were light on coverage. And the borough entered into this agreement to take care of Parkside and fairly compensate the Borough of Brookhaven, so taxpayers, Brookhaven taxpayers don't subsidize their police coverage. So, continue, Jay. Sorry, Matt.
And that is basically my report. Other than that, Mr. President, I can report general progress.
Mr. Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. My report is also on file. Just a couple of things I do want to mention is the trash and resales contracts are set to expire the end of this year. It's directed by council. We prepared a bid documents, and those bids are tentatively due back on August 25, consideration at our September meeting. The storm order, the MS4 permit, we discussed this in the past. The pollution reduction plan has been submitted to the EP, and we're awaiting comments on that. And finally, under Chandler Drive Traffic Calming, we solicited proposals from three local contractors for installation of speed humps. Received two back. One bidder indicated he was not interested. We also received or...
Indicated what?
Was not interested, not able to do the work.
Oh, okay.
So those prices ranged from $9,600 for three of them to $11,625. Also looked up a online internet price from a local supplier of reportable speed humps, and that was $6,900 for three speed humps.
That's just the cost of materials, correct?
Just the cost of materials, correct.
Speaking for myself, I want to see those speed humps before we consider installing the temporaries, because if... So I would move that a few members of council find a local municipality that has them installed to go visit them in person. I did try this week, but you got back to me and said you could not locate one.
So a quick question. The three proposals that you have, they're for permanent ones?
No, they, no.
Two. We sent RFP to three separate contractors. Two of them provided prices as requested. The third one indicated that they were not able to provide the price. The costs are underneath the threshold, for bidding threshold reasons, so if, at the desire of council, we have the ability to award if so choose to do so.
What was the, what was the cost of the permanent speed humps?
AF Damon Company was at $9,600 for three speed humps.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misheard you.
That's why I was asking.
I would, I would move that we go with the permanents if, due to the cost.
Do we have the dimensions of the permanents?
But this is only for the materials. This isn't...
This is installation.
No, that's installation.
Oh, it's installation.
The permanent ones are installed by the contractor. There's also additional cost of $2,400 for signage and stripping.
For the signage.
If we choose to do that, we'll have our Public Works do that.
Are you confident that the permanent speed humps will do the job that we...
Absolutely.
We are looking for.
Absolutely.
At that cost, I would, I would certainly suggest that the council make that action tonight.
And I would highly recommend that we expend the monies for the appropriate signage.
That shouldn't be a problem at all.
We won't. We will have to vote to add this to the agenda, however.
So we're not going with the temporary ones, we're going with the permanent ones? Is that what we're saying?
If the engineer is confident that they will do the job that is intended, yes.
And they're not going to interfere with our emergency responders?
Yeah, we'll be good with that.
We've, we've been through this conversation. Chief Montella?
We're good.
Okay. So we'll need a motion to add this action item to the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No questions? No questions? Read me that motion again, sir.
It'd be awarded contract to AF Damon Company Incorporated of Upland, PA, in the amount of $9,600 for installation of three speed humps on Chandler Drive, plus $2,400 for signs and striping.
Okay, there's the motion.
Yes, but are we doing this? I thought we were...
Can we strike the signs and striping?
We're not buying the signage from her. We just said our...
We're going to do the signs ourselves? Public Works is going to do it? Okay, all right.
Sean, Dave.
Reread it without, reread it. Reread the motion.
Somebody else told me they wanted to...
I just want to get you more airtime. I know how you love to speak.
Absolutely.
Reread it without the signage, please.
To award a contract to AF Damon Company of Upland, PA, in the amount of $9,600 for installation of three speed humps on Chandler Drive.
One more time slower. That's the motion. Who wants it?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Katania, for your work on that.
That's all I have.
And the signage will be installed simultaneously with the installation of the speed humps?
By the Public Works Department, yes. I don't have a whole lot tonight. I've spent the majority of the last month working on the Parkside-Brookhaven Police Agreement, phone calls and emails and meetings, and it's pretty much nonstop. I'm glad that we were able to come to an agreement that benefits both sides and maintains Parkside's public safety and police coverage. And we sort of have a conclusion regarding the ALS coverage. We were about to secure a grant for $100,000 from Senator Kane's office. I received that grant application, and Mr. Montella and his brother, the other chief, Montella, Dave Montella, filled out the grant application in about 15 minutes and got it back to me late on a weeknight. I was very, very, very grateful for that. Mr. Wilworth's looking at me like he doesn't know what I'm talking about. He was out with COVID, so I never forwarded it to him, so you'll have that tomorrow in an email to complete. And so we'll have $100,000 from Senator Kane's office, and I have a pledge from the county of Delaware to cover the other $50,000 for our ALS coverage. And that is both for one full calendar year, starting with and assuming that we sign an agreement for that coverage with Mainline Health. So that is good news. It'll cover us for a year. It'll give us plenty of time to work on a long-term solution for critical ALS coverage. Other than that, I have a motion to approve the June 27, 2022 council workshop minutes. Who wants the motion?
I'll take the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Motion carries. Motion to approve the July 11, 2022 council meeting minutes?
So moved. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to approve the July 25, 2022 council workshop minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Other than that, I report general progress. Grand MafSA Wiki?
Yes, thank you. We do have bills to pay this month, and the general fund is $19,935.75. Sewer fund is $4,812, for a total of $24,747.75. I will make a motion that we can pay these bills this month.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mrs. Fuchs?
Thank you. The Ordinance Committee met on Thursday, July 21st, to discuss the responsible contractors' ordinance. We've made edits, and everyone has a copy in front of them. Please make sure to take a look at it and let us know if you have any changes or, you know, whether you agree with it, you don't agree with it. We would appreciate that feedback. I am also regretfully requesting a motion to accept the resignation of Erica Fuchs from the Ordinance Committee effective immediately. Erica has been on the committee since at least 2012 and has been instrumental in the success of the committee. Erica, on behalf of council and especially myself, thank you for everything.
Who wants the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I would also thank Erica Fuchs. I worked with Erica Fuchs on the Ordinance Committee before I was on council. She's wonderful, wonderful individual, great volunteer. She was a great councilwoman, all-around great person. She will be missed, and we wish her well.
Rec Board and community events...
Mr. Wills would like to interject.
I know Ms. Fuchs has been involved with the Borough's Association literally for decades. This woman has given up her time and energy and her talents to this Borough and boroughs throughout Delaware County and the Commonwealth for many, many years.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. Rec Board and community events. Ava Vitality Yoga has begun another five-week session, which started last Thursday at 6:30. Due to the heat, we will be holding the remaining four sessions in the community room. It is $20 to participate for the remaining four classes. So if you're interested, please come next, this Thursday, and come before 6:30 so you can sign the required waiver, and you can have your yoga class. Volleyball has finished for the summer, and we all had a great time. Stay tuned...
Except for my knee injury. I have an MRI Thursday. Thank you.
Stay tuned for future sessions.
You do see.
We will have additional fundraisers at Iron Hill Brewery on August 3rd, 10th, and 17th. 20% of the sales will go to the Rec Board for upcoming events, so please mention Brookhaven when ordering in the restaurant and takeout. Brookhaven Borough's Family Day is Saturday, September 24th, from 12 to 4 p.m. at Brookhaven Municipal Center. Ticket signups will begin in August, so today. See the website calendar or your mailed calendar for the start and end dates of signups. Shred and Electronics Event will be Saturday, November 5th, at Coburn Elementary School parking lot. We will make sure that it'll be on the sign and everywhere to remind residents about it. Usually I get phone calls from people right afterwards, like the day after that they didn't know about it, so we'll make sure we get it out there, and hopefully people will be listening to this recording and know that it's coming up. And that is all my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fuchs. Mrs. Heller?
Okay, I just have a few things. First, I am going to make a motion to adopt the Civil Service Amendments for Sergeant's Test and for Full-Time Officers' Alderability for Testing. Not going to read the five-page report. This is a resolution of the Brookhaven Civil Service Commission amending the Borough's Civil Service Rules and Regulations pertaining qualifications for the position of full-time police officer in the Borough of Brookhaven, and the creation of the qualifications for the rank of sergeant in the Brookhaven Borough Police Department. That's the motion.
Who wants the second?
Second.
Who took that second?
A bunch of people.
Mr. Vaskus.
Quick call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions or any opposed?
I'll go to oppose on that one.
Mr. Wilworth, can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Fuchs?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mrs. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Gilroy?
Yes.
Mr. Pappas?
No.
Ms. Sawicki?
Yes.
Mr. Vaskus?
Aye.
Six to one.
Six to one, the ayes have it. Motion carries. Anything else?
No, I do.
Oh, continue.
The Prairie Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, August 17th, at 7:30 in the council room, so please, anyone that would like to participate and volunteer, please come out. The representatives from Parkside, Upland, and Brookhaven Rep Board, along with the corresponding emails from the mayors, met on July 27th to talk about the senior arts program and expanding it. I'll have Mr. Dykes elaborate a little bit more, but what happens is that we're looking to have all three boroughs participate to offer expansion for that program. So all the events will be held in the Borough here on specific dates, on specific times throughout the course of the year. So Mr. Dykes has those dates and can elaborate a little bit more on that. Other than that, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Heller. Mr. Pappas, sir?
I have a motion from the Planning Commission. The motion is to accept the resignation of Ron Jackson, who's been with the Planning Commission for 24 years, and this would be effective, obviously, today.
Ms. Sawicki had a concern?
Yes, we haven't gotten, as far as I know, the resignation from Mr. Jackson, which should be in the office. It has to go to John.
It's in the back.
Oh, you said that.
Right back.
Yeah, I did. But I just want, but physically it really should be, but he got it now.
Is it from, hold on, is it from Mr. Jackson and not a third party? That was...
Has his signature.
I saw.
Okay, well, that was Ms. Sawicki's concern before the meeting. I just wanted...
Ah, that's all.
The agenda was delayed, dated July 18th, so we received it a couple weeks ago.
Well, there's nothing even says that. No, it went to the Planning Commission. It goes to Borough Secretary. Everything as a resignation goes to him, not to the chairman of the committee.
Okay, that's fine.
They can get a copy.
It was a procedural matter that Mr. Kerns was unaware of at all. We do have a resignation letter of resignation from Mr. Jackson.
Because he's the one who's the custodian of all the records, not the chairman of the committees.
We do have it.
No, I know, I just want to make sure.
No, I'm asking.
No, this has, this has...
It went to the Planning Commission.
Okay, but it's from Mr. Jackson. I'm sorry, George.
But it didn't get to John.
Ms. Sawicki had a question before the meeting.
I didn't see it.
That's the motion, right?
Yeah, yes.
We accept his resignation with deep regret.
Absolutely.
So now we have a motion to...
We have, we have... There's the motion, and we need a second.
I'll second it. I have no problem.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Sorry, George, continue. Motion carries.
Follow-up. Motion to appoint Cory Jackson. Cory Jackson, the servant of the Planning Commission, to fill a vacancy created by Mr. Jackson.
Whenever you have a vacancy on a committee, it's been the long practice for all the years I've been here, 45 years, that we do advertise for the position. We open it to the public, and anybody who wants to put their name in can do it. What they're doing is recommending from within, but that's great, but we do have to open up everything to every resident, because people will want to become members. And that's, that's the way the law is.
All right, all right.
That's the way it's always been.
Okay, you're fine with that?
Yeah, sure. And he will be one of the people, I'm sure...
And make no mistake, Cory Jackson will be a fine addition.
Yeah, we know him. That's not a problem.
So do we have to... I'm sorry, I need to... So does that mean that tonight we have to make a motion to advertise that position?
Yeah.
But we would have to add it, so we would have to make a motion to add that to the agenda, to make a motion to accept that, correct? If that makes sense?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to advertise for the vacancy on the Brookhaven Planning Commission.
I'll take it.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Pappas has the motion, Ms. Sawicki has the second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Do we need to add it, though?
Yes.
That advertisement can be placed on the Borough's website. It need not be placed in a newspaper of general circulation.
We can do that, and we can paste it on social media also. It still has to be done by motion, though. So I'll entertain a, or Mr. Pappas, you go ahead and entertain the motion, advertise for the vacancy.
I'll make a motion to advertise for the vacancy. Of the position for Ron Jackson's resignation from the Planning Commission.
That'll work. Who wants the second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Any questions?
Yeah.
All right, that was a lot harder than it should have been. Thank you, George.
And the last of it, none of my committees met this month, so I do not have another report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vaskus is fresh off a Jimmy Buffett concert, and he'd like to speak. Go ahead, Mr. Vaskus.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody's enjoying summer. Just one quick thing. We had a heat injury at my work the other day. Everybody, if you're going to be out in the heat, stay hydrated. Don't need to fall to become a heat casualty at all. And on to zoning. I have a resignation letter from a Mr. Paul Mara that was submitted to us on July 27th. I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of the former zoning hearing board chairman in the Brookhaven Borough in Delaware County, Pennsylvania.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Vaskus has the motion. Would you like to second?
I'll second it then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
Also, I would like to add to the agenda to advertise for the open position in the zoning hearing board.
Who wants the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions?
Then I would like to make the motion to advertise for the opening in the zoning hearing board.
I'll second it.
Well, we're still appointing someone tonight for Hastings.
Yes, but this is an additional opening.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Who wants the second?
You're right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You guys are exhausting me tonight.
It's a lot of repeating.
It is.
All right, on to good news now.
Matter of fact, I'm leaving.
I have a resolution to announce. A resolution for the Brookhaven, I'm sorry, a resolution of the Borough of Brookhaven, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, appointing a qualified resident to fill a vacancy on the zoning hearing board, whereas there presently exists a vacancy in the membership of the zoning hearing board as a result of the recent resignation of board member Gary Hastings. And whereas there are presently no alternate members of the zoning hearing board qualified to fill such a vacancy. And whereas Article 9, Section 903 of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code authorizes the Borough Council to fill all vacancies in the membership of the zoning hearing board by appointing a qualified resident of the municipality by resolution. And whereas the Borough Council has determined that a Christopher J. Vedino of 3722 Donegal Lane is a qualified member for this position and has expressed interest to be appointed as a board member to fill the unexpired term of Gary Hastings. And now therewith be it resolved that the Brookhaven Borough Council hereby appoints Christopher J. Vedino to fill the existing vacancy on the Brookhaven Borough zoning hearing board with the term of office to expire on December 31st, 2024. Resolve this first day of August, 2022.
Who wants the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions?
Chris is back there.
Motion carries. Mr. Vedino's in the back. Thank you for calling.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for volunteering. Next thing for zoning, we will be with the changings of all the seats and the resignation of chairman. We will be reorganizing soon. That date's to be determined. Secondly, on to Public Works. Try and make this a little shorter. The July monthly report for Public Works, we had one sewer call at the entrance of The July monthly report for Public Works, we had one sewer call at the entrance of Memorial Park. The issue was in Hilltop and our lines are clear for once. Sewer maintenance cleaned two sections of sanitary sewer mains. Our year-to-date total is 116 sections that have been cleared using our sewer machine. Duce Route Control treated just under 1,700 feet sanitary sewer mains. The guarantee period for these streets is set to the end of August, 2022. There is a sinkhole located at 4111 Mount Vernon with dye test and televised. There's no issues with the main. Second sinkhole was found on Whitley Road. It's also checked with no issues on these storm sewer mains. Just some general notes. Third quarter chipping is completed and of 42 appointments this time. A down倾was removed from Creek Road and Brook, Creek and Bridgewater Road that was blocking a traffic lane. 30 PA One Call tickets were, this Public Works team was dispatched for. Year-to-date totals, 245 tickets. Under the parks, we installed a new, the playgrounds at Garcia and Sanson received some new mulch. Trying to keep that area maintained. So no kids get hurt and the proper height for all the swing sets. Three tree branches were removed from the playing field near Summit. Extra trash cans were taken to Eden Park for the recent events. And we installed and fixed one camera in Sanson. There's no accidents to report or injuries for the month of July. And I just wanted to thank everybody who was involved with the show for hope. It's a great turnout. It's nice to see our community come together around a great cause. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Gilroy, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, Chief Vice, I want to congratulate Officer Palmer on being selected Officer of the Month. I think it's a great thing and I hope we keep on doing this and hearing nice stories. It's really nice to have a positive spin on you pleasing. Brings me to historical committee. The historical committee will meet August 17th, 6:30 in this room here. And I guess council will review the PDF document here that's related to the mass communication system for text messages and emails. It's a pretty good little company here and they do a good job. I think we should really take a look at it. Mr. President, that'll be the end of my report.
Thank you. And what, what we've, we've commented on social media here and there and posted. So Mr. Gilroy took the lead to look into a mass texting, mass email service for certain items that can't wait for council meetings or workshops or for those that don't see Facebook posts. Not all of us live on Facebook like Mrs. Fuchs. So one example would be closing the office down last week. We, we had, and making the meeting virtual. We had a couple of individuals come up here thinking the meeting was live. Why wouldn't they think it was live? They don't have Facebook. So this looks like it's a pretty good plan. It's costly, $6,000 a year?
Yes.
But I just, I did have a question. Looking through the plan, in, in the past, some of the other companies were based on the number of messages that went out. This looks like it's about timing. So it's about the amount you can send out in a minute. It's not necessarily- Yeah, like before it was very costly.
$30,000 a year.
Yeah, I don't, it would have cost, it would have cost 20 or 20 to 30,000. I don't-
Like for instance, it says text messages 60,000 per minute.
I, I think that's like what they actually do as a company.
Okay.
Yeah, like that just like, yeah, they control.
Through all their clients?
Yeah, that's just-
I see, okay.
That's how busy they are. This is, I mean, most of the municipalities in Delaware County have some type of association with this company, whether it's website or this type of communication.
Okay.
Civic ready?
Yeah, this is, they only do municipalities.
Councilman Cossing, I'm going to call you up. Do you use civic ready? Who do you use for your mass email?
We don't have that.
I thought you did.
Oh, yeah, but not like that type of thing. It's a, it's just through our- I think it's just through your website. I don't think it's-
Oh, I see, okay. You have, you have 36 Facebook pages, but you, but you don't-
So is there-
That operating does mass text.
So this cost is, you could, if you want to send out thousands and thousands and thousands in a week, you can and it's not, okay?
They did a point where you can even break up normal templates and use it for non-emergency situations, which is something that we can really utilize and it can be sent by your, your cell phone.
Yeah.
So our cell phone, you can have the app, you can send it out. We could have the chief. If he has emergency, boom, it's out to everyone.
Yeah.
You can even pinpoint it geographically, like say, hey, these four streets, send to them, what's going on there?
Yeah.
You can even, it's, it's really, really, really impressive.
The only way, the only way you see things on Facebook is if you go looking for it. This will come to you, yeah.
And this will also post directly onto our Facebook for us.
Oh, it does that? And Twitter, which has one tweet so far.
So I, I would recommend that no matter which direction we go, that we take advantage of Family Day and we have a table and we start collecting that data from residents because it's going to take a while and-
So they have the ability to input any database we currently have immediately. So if we have an emergency list or whatever we have, they can immediately just take the database and shove it in there. So I mean, we probably have a very big cast start.
So does the, so does the individual have to go in and create like a profile?
No, 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 no. You can go on our, we can actually have it embedded in our own website. They can just go log in. Here's my number, you know, sign up for what, what events they want to be notified for and that's it.
So they, does it have to have like a username, password?
No, 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 no. Everything's done through text message.
You don't have to, yeah, it's something, it's something we need with some of the emergencies we've had in the borough. The storm in 15, the flooding on Creek Road, the COVID closures, general, general family, yeah.
That's the benefit of this. Is that they have-
The average, the average grant-
That's better than what we're doing now.
The, the average grant takes a year. So I doubt there's grants for this. I, I mean, I highly doubt it. There's no, it's not a-
It's an annual fee.
Yeah, it's, it's an annual fee. It's not all that much for the service, service that it provides.
Do we know who's currently utilizing this system right now?
We should talk to other teams. We should talk to-
Like, like anyone pretty much that has a mass is using this. This is the most popular company in the country. This is what-
They'll, they'll accept only a two-year contract, correct?
That's just what the initial-
Okay, okay.
Mike, can we reach out to a couple of these towns and see what their thoughts are on this?
Upland uses it. Upland runs, runs it through their website, this company.
Oh, okay.
Most municipalities have, have some type of association with this. They only work in municipalities.
Okay.
They don't do any private sites. Just with their little space here.
Fire department can have access?
Absolutely. As many users, as many tablets, we can set up our little tablets, click this for-
Okay.
It, it's whatever you need. It, it's impressive.
Well, we've been talking about it for two years. We have to-
And we can have a tour.
Longer than that?
They gave, they gave me a tour and it'd be really simple to, let's log on to Zoom and-
Actually, you're right. We talked about it on their previous council.
They did. It's been a long time.
That died. Whatever. Thank you, Mr. Gilroy. We will, what, what's the timeline we want to put on this?
There's 60 days for, for that price.
Okay, that's fair. Give us, give us-
Realize it's not in the current budget and it may not be in the next budget. I'm just giving you, you know, you have a lot going on. We have increasing personnel.
Oh, we do? Oh, I didn't, I didn't realize we had a lot going on.
We got fire trucks. We got all kinds of stuff we're buying down this year. I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars and it's like-
Yeah, I'm, I'm well, yeah, I'm well aware.
Yeah, I wish somebody was aware.
You're welcome for the $150,000, by the way. Mr. Leslie, sir?
A couple of things here. The chief mentioned we had the flower pot, pot at Hilltop Summit. It was a near miss, the AC unit in B Building at Hilltop Summit. The other three near misses that we had in fire was on Maple Avenue, was a porch, the Beer Barn, and the 352 diner. The only good thing about this, they were immediately 911 phone calls. There was no delayed 911 phone calls after interviewing these people, as opposed to the other three significant fires we had here in the borough. Chandler Drive, Janey Avenue, and Lincoln. They were all delayed 911 phone calls. Please dial 911 for anything, especially you smell something funny. Call 911. Don't delay. That's five near misses we had. Hopefully we don't have any big significant fires. At least I don't want any. Thank you. 2023, Eko's going to do some upgrading on their gas mains over on Grant Drive and Jackson Drive. Shepherd Street and Greenwood, that looks like it's wrapped up. Coco's is moving along. And that's the end of my report.
Can we ask how the flower pot fire started at Hilltop? I'm just curious. Mrs. Heller's flower pots are all over the place. I don't want to-
Yeah, mice with matches. I believe it was a cigarette butt in the little mulch pot.
Oh, yeah.
Mulch is really bad, believe it or not. Mulch gets deep-seated and it burns from the, from below up, if you know what I mean. So-
I had it happen in my backyard years ago, yeah.
Exactly. When you think it's out, it's not. You can, you got to pull it apart. Mulch is really just terrible.
It generates heat.
Don't let your guard down against fire people, please. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from council? Mr. Vice, Chief Vice, Chief Montal? All right. Brings us to the second public discussion session. If there's anyone that would like to speak, if there's anyone that would like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium and state your name and street for the record.
I'd like to dramatic. I'm on the last.
You are cool.
I'd love to dramatic to be on last. Tom Dykes, 305 West Brookhaven Road.
He's trying to interrupt our post-meeting tailgate party is what he's trying to do.
Yeah. Just some updates on Rec, on Recreation Board and what's going on. We've now had our third stories by Olivia. We're having our fourth one next Tuesday at 12 o'clock at Eden Park. If anyone would like to come, that'd be great. We finished up our books on blankets through the Middletown Library on Thursday of last week. Have really great turnouts for that. Really good with that. They're moving on to Parkside now and doing Lego programs with them. And we're negotiating with them to do another Books on Blankets in September for the local, again, at Eden Park. Once the kids are back at school, some moms can concentrate on the little kids. So it should be good that way. If you please, if you'd like to sponsor or help out with rec board donations, help, or, no. Iron Hill, this Wednesday, next Wednesday, and the following Wednesday, just tell them you're coming in for Brookhaven Recreation Board and they'll give us some, hopefully support us on some of those things.
And it's dining under the stars.
Huh?
It's dining under the stars.
It's dining under the stars that week, so. Good for doing that. Throw me on the bus. The senior art program, yes. We met with Parkside, Upland, and Brookhaven on senior art. We have our senior art program we've been doing for the last two years. We're trying to expand it and set it on a regular basis, working with the different boroughs, trying to get everything together. We have dates in October, November.
January.
January and March.
And then?
So we have five dates set up. Those will be out shortly with that. So be looking for that fun stuff. Family Day is coming up. Registration or ticket, tickets are available starting the 22nd, the 22nd of August. I'm writing that one and going through. So they'll be here at council meetings as well as Dory Day. So we'll have those things going on. There were some other things. I forget what they were. My brain is dead. Volleyball will start up again in September. We're hoping for two months and then going, starting again in March or April. And we're hoping to get an adult basketball program going at the same time on different nights. So that'll be going through with that. I would like to thank Public Works for their quick attention to some possible danger at Eden Park with a dead tree and some very high dead limbs. They're taking care of that quite quickly. We noticed it one week and the very next week they had a person incoming to look at it and they're working getting it out of there next week. So it should be good. So it's really good. Trying to expand all of that and improve programs. If anyone would like to volunteer for Family Day, please come to our meeting on Monday, August, August the 8th, 7 o'clock here at Borough Hall. And if you'd like to volunteer and be on the Recreation Board, please come join us. We normally meet the last Thursday of every month. However, August, we do not have a meeting, just so everyone knows.
We should have, that we're considering adding a sand volleyball court at Eden Park in the spot where the unused-
That's, that's one of our planning.
Yeah, where the unused bocce pits are.
We're working on that.
Public Works could build that for very, very cheap.
Public Works is working.
And the unused horseshoe pits.
So you rule.
Slave labor. Right, thank you.
Cheap labor. Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for public discussion? If so, approach the podium and state your name and street for the record. Second public discussion session is closed. Anyone else from council have anything to add? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good evening, everyone.